A zoning hearing for today. Before we get started, would you please stand and join for the plate of allegiance?
(inaudible)
Thank you. I trust everyone had a good Labor Day. We have a full agenda. And so with that, I'll turn it to Mr. Peterson to walk us through.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we begin the hearing, I just want to go over the process and procedure for how today's hearing is going to be run. Each case will be called in numerical order. We would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand, so they can be counted for the official record. Then, after recognizing both parties, both parties will be asked to come forward, be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if anyone will testify, second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes in the presentation period. There's not a process to reserve your time or to rebut what was said previously, so you need to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to their front for additional comments or questions. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice. That's LUP 27 of 2024, Scott D. Smith. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice. It will not be heard. There are a number of cases on today's agenda which have been either held or continued, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z2 of 2024, Florinway Development Group LLC. This case has been continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z39 of 2024, Asher Homes Inc., LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z39 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z40 of 2024, Elite Engineering. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z40 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z44 of 2024, Manor Restorations LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z44 of 2024 will not be heard today. And finally, rezoning case Z51 of 2024, Belmont Fine Homes LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z51 of 2024 will not be heard today.
I understand that Adam Rosen has withdrawn Z51. This is unhelpful.
Okay, yeah. Excuse me. He did send a letter in late last week. I think it was Thursday or Friday, and he did ask this case to be withdrawn without prejudice. So that would be up to the board to vote whether it's with or without prejudice. Okay.
All right, continue.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Did you want to allow to withdraw without prejudice?
I don't have any problem with it being withdrawn. They haven't provided any additional information, so I don't know what the plan is. I have a call into Adam, but that's, I haven't heard back.
Okay. Well, the question is, do you want it withdrawn with or without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Okay, so we just need to vote on that.
All right, so we have a second.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ball. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of 5 to 0 to withdraw Z51 without prejudice.
Okay, thank you. We did get some requests late last week, Mr. Chairman and Board. The applicant for LUP 25 of 2024, David Gaddy, he cannot be here today due to a family emergency. So the staff would ask the board to continue LUP 25 of 2024 to your next zoning hearing on October 1st.
We're going to include Z9 as well, John?
Yes, we need to have a vote on LUP 25.
Okay. So that, LUP 25 is in District 3, so again, I'll turn it to Commissioner Lindstrom to make that motion.
Yes, I make a motion to continue until October.
Second. I have a second from Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of 5 to 0 to continue LUP 25 until October.
Okay. And last case I have, Mr. Chairman, is applicant for Z9 of 2024, Thomas Orick has requested this case be continued to your October 1st hearing. So we just need the board to allow that by a vote.
Motion to continue Z9 until the October 1st Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of 5 to 0 to continue LUP 25 until October.
Okay. And last case I have, Mr. Chairman, is applicant for Z9 of 2024, Thomas Orick has requested this case be continued to your October 1st hearing. So we just need the board to allow that by a vote.
Motion to continue Z9 until the October 1st Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of 5 to 0 to continue Z9 to October. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Before we begin consent, I do have two more announcements. I would like to ask the folks in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn your cell phone's volume off. When the phone's ringing, it does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be given by the board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for September 3rd, 2024. First case on consent is rezoning case Z32 of 2024, Emily G. Dunn, request rezoning from GC to NRC for retail warehouse in Land Lot 60 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Kenton Road, north of Jamison Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number 1, the district commissioner to approve the final site plan. Number 2, the district commissioner to approve the final use. Number 3, parking to meet code requirements. Number 4, no outdoor storage. Number 5, no automotive or warehouse uses. However, showroom use is permitted. Number 6, variances as identified in the zoning comments. Number 7, fire department comments and recommendations. Number 8, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number 9, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And number 10, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z32. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case on consent is rezoning case Z43 of 2024, Campus Realty Advisors LLC, request rezoning from OS to RRC for purpose-built student housing in Land Lot 430 of the 16th District. The property is located at the terminus of Chastain Center Boulevard, south of Chastain Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number 1, site plan last revised August 22nd, 2024, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Number 2, district commissioner to approve final building architecture and elevations that demonstrate considerations designed to minimize the transfer of noise prior to permitting. Number 3, applicant shall coordinate with local law enforcement to develop a security plan in accordance with the standards of crime prevention through environmental design, and district commissioner to approve the final security plan, and it should be reviewed and updated annually thereafter. Number 4, onsite management shall be required 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Number 5, variances as identified in the zoning comments are approved for request 1, 5, and 6. Number 6, fire department comments and recommendations. Number 7, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number 8, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number 9, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. And number 10, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated August 26th, 2024. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Z43? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case on consent is rezoning case Z45, Jeff Kwan, request rezoning from RA6 to R30 for a single-family residence in Land Lot 463 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Macklin Road, west of Gus Robinson Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following use conditions. Number 1, single-family use only. Number 2, adherence to Macklin Road design guidelines. Number 3, fire department comments and recommendations. Number 4, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number 5, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And number 6, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z45? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z46, Charles Milo, request a rezoning from GC to TS for an automotive paint and body repair shop in Land Lot 422 of the 17th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Ledford Street and Lanta Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number 1, final site plan to be approved by the district commissioner. Number 2, fire department comments and recommendations. Number 3, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number 4, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number 5, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number 6, all vehicles to be parked in striped parking spaces. And number 7, no outdoor storage or outdoor displays of merchandise. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for Z46, Charles Milo? Is there anyone here opposed to this case? Mr. Chairman and Board, the applicant is not present, and there's no one here to oppose it, so would it be the board's desire to just leave this on consent?
Yeah, this is in District 2, so I will defer to Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, my desire would be to leave it on consent. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next case is rezoning case Z48, Kennison Hospital Inc., request a rezoning from LRC to ONI for an urgent care clinic in land lots 216 and 241 of the 20th District. The property is located at the southeast intersection of Kennisaw due West Road and Stylesborough Road. Staff recommends deletion to LRC subject to the following conditions. Number 1, site plan revised on July 24th, 2024, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Number 2, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number 3, fire department comments and recommendations. Number 4, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number 5, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number 6, urgent care clinic use would be permitted use under the LRC zoning district. And number 7, district commissioner to approve the final elevation, signage, and landscaping. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z48? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case on consent is rezoning case Z50, A1 Auto Coors LLC, request a rezoning from RA20 to LI for automotive repair in Land Lot 292 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Pearl Street, east of South Cobb Drive. The Planning Commission recommends deletion to Terrace Services subject to the following conditions. Number 1, site plan received by the zoning division on July 9th, 2024, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Number 2, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated August 26th, 2024. Number 3, variances 1 and 3 are approved as stated in the zoning comments. Number 4, fire department comments and recommendations. Number 5, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number 6, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number 7, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number 8, all vehicles to be parked in striped parking spaces. No vehicles to be parked on grass dirt or gravel. Number 9, no outdoor storage or outdoor display of merchandise. Number 10, 40-foot landscape buffer to be installed and maintained on the southern property line. And number 11, the property to be cleaned up and not lived in by the time of construction or business license. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z50? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into the special land use permit on consent, SLUP 9 of 2024, Campus Realty Advisors LLC, request a special land use permit for purpose-built student housing in Land Lot 430 of the 16th District. The property is located at the terminus of Chastain Center Boulevard, south of Chastain Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number 1, site plan last revised August 22nd, 2024, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Number 2, district commissioner to approve final building architecture and elevations that demonstrate considerations designed to minimize the transfer of noise prior to permitting. Number 3, applicant shall coordinate with local law enforcement to develop a security plan in accordance with the standards of crime prevention through environmental design and district commissioner approval. The security plan should be reviewed and updated annually thereafter. Number 4, onsite management shall be required 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Variances as identified in the zoning comments are approved for request 1, 5, and 6. Number 6, fire department comments and recommendations. Number 7, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number 8, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number 9, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. And number 10, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated August 26th, 2024. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLUP 9? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Before doing so, can I just clarify one thing? Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I've discussed this with the applicant beforehand on Z48, and I've confirmed with the applicant that the tree buffer on the residential lot will remain as a condition of zoning, and this is as shown on Z95 of 2003 landscaping plan. Is that substantially correct?
That is all correct, thank you.
Thank you. That motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Second. I have a second from Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? I'll add a point of discussion before we vote, and it's more for the record. I am going to vote in favor of the consent agenda, but for Z48, I'm going to recuse myself from that one. Any further discussion? If not, let's call the question. Vote of 5 to 0 to approve the consent agenda. Thank you.
Okay, all those folks are on consent. You're free to go. Just come back in two weeks for the board's hearing.
We're not allowed to take comment from the floor at this stage.
(inaudible) first home to October 1st. I want to make sure I'm true with what I heard Z39. Does that mean?
Yes, it's October 1st for Z39.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving into the held and continued case agenda. First case we're going to hear today is rezoning case Z35 of 2024, Chuck Wuzu, request rezoning from RA6 and the NRC to RSL for a residential senior living supportive residential unit project in land lots 621, 638, and 639 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Powder Springs Road and on the northeast side of Pear Road. Is the applicant present?
He's on his way.
He's on his way? Okay. So we'll put that one on hold, Mr. Chairman and Board, and come back to it when he arrives. So next case is rezoning case Z37 of 2024, Bosco IKEA Canana, request a rezoning from RA20 to ONI for a doctor's office in Land Lot 1006 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Austin Road, north of Drayton Avenue. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z37? Two? Okay, let the record show there's two people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
So I'm Wes Hughes. I'm representing Bosco for this. We had come back in August, and there were some questions. We've provided updated plans for landscaping, stormwater, sewer. Still working on the DOT access for this. But if there's any questions, or I know you might have had some questions, or the opposition, that's really all I have at the moment.
It's completely your time to present. So you got, you got, all right, thank you. We'll hear from our position.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I am with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. I co-chair the zoning committee. The PowerPoint presentation I have is exactly the same as last month, because it was not until 10 o'clock last night that we received from the applicant a updated site plan. We looked at it quickly, as best one can do at 10 o'clock at night, but we're really not prepared to be able to understand whether the issues that we had laid out last month and that I was prepared to lay out again today are still issues. From what I understand, it's not been submitted to the staff. I attempted to forward it to Commissioner Hughes, but the file was too large and it bounced, so I'll instead just try to cover as best I can where I think we are. Generally, we support the zoning application. We think it's a good use for this property. We like the staff recommendation of LRO for this, for this piece of property and for this, for this plan. But the, the site plan has, has quite a few issues, and it's unclear to us which of these may or may not have been addressed. The variance on the, on the south side of the, of the property against single-family, quite candidly, is one about which we're a little bit confused. It was called out in the staff analysis, and we don't see a difference in this plan, but it looks to us like perhaps it is on the plan. The dumpster was added on the plan that we received last night, so we appreciate that. We did not see stormwater information, but it could be, could well be there. It's simply just not enough time to get a good look at it. We don't know, it sounds like from the applicant's conversation just now, that perhaps all the DOT issues are not resolved. And certainly, that's high on the list because Austin Road, as you know, is quite a, a busy road, and this, this is going to be yet another driveway, close to lots of other driveways on Austin Road. Although, we did see a landscaping plan in what we received last night, I don't know that it meets the requirements for landscape, for the landscape enhancement strip along Austin Road. There was a landscape plan. It was minimal, I guess I would say. There were elevations included last night, and we appreciate that, and we'll certainly be looking at them. So I guess I'm pretty much in the same situation I was this time last month, suggesting that if there's a decision that has to be made today, we would have to recommend denial, simply because there's, there are so many unknowns here, and there's not been the ability of the staff, now, there's not been the ability of the staff to adequately analyze this new plan. We would instead hope that perhaps it could be continued until these, these issues could be fully fleshed out. Thank you.
Thank you. This is in District 4, so I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Hughes to lead our discussion.
Thank you, Chairman Vault. I, too, like the community, have not seen the updated site plan, and don't have the benefit of having the time to provide any, to analyze and provide any feedback at this point in time. It was referenced earlier that the DOT requirements may not have been addressed with this latest site plan, so I think it would be important for staff to have an opportunity to review that. Stormwater comments also need, we need to be sure that they're addressed as well. So I think with that, my recommendation at this point in time would be that we hold this for 30 days to give the community and staff some time to evaluate the most recent site plan and then provide any updated recommendations that may have at that point in time. And that'd be my motion.
Second. I have a second from Commissioner Ball. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of 5 to 0 to hold Z37 for 30 days. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and Board, the applicant has come in for the first case that was called, and he knows, so I'm going to recall that case. Rezoning case Z35 of 2024, Chuck Wuzu, request a rezoning from RA6 and the NRC to RSL for a residential senior living supportive residential units in land lots 621, 638, and 639 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Powder Springs Road and on the northeast side of Pear Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z35? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was here last month. By the way, my name is Chuck Wuzu. This said property was rezoned about three years ago to RA6 and NRC respectively. But over time, the plan has changed. And so today, last month, I was here. I was requested to make some site plan adjustments to address DOT concerns. So I have here with me the new site plan, if you don't mind. This property is located between Pear Road and Hushburn on Powder Springs. At the corner where the property touches Pear Road, previously, we had an exit, but it was so close to the existing exit, to the, to that, to the property that just borders. Previously, we were coming from here. We had an exit from here, and this other property had an exit that even touches my property. So it was practically impossible to have two exits. Our entrance is very close. So and DOT and the board also requested, had to request that I request for an in-access from this property, perhaps get an easement. But the neighbor accepted. However, there are a bunch of utilities on the ground that made it almost practically impossible for us to have an access from that point. So as a result of that, we made a change to keep the NRC part of these 5.1 acres as it is. Then we do the development on the four, on the remaining four acres. So that means we don't need any access. We don't need to exit or enter from Pear Road. All the in- and out accesses will be on Powder Springs Road. And we also, already, we have satisfied the DOT comment to have acceleration laying on Powder Springs. to have acceleration lane on Powder Springs and maintain the distance between the entrance and the Horseshoe Bend traffic light. Additional information I have here is to give us a look at how the property will look like upon development. So I have the elevation plans. If you don't mind, let me just share this. So this, this property is going to be, we're going to use a combination of bricks. Majority will be bricks. We have some stucco and some stones in order to make it look aesthetically okay by the county or passersby. So this is the left side elevation. I also have the right side as well and the front side. The whole building will be all bricks, stucco and, and also stones. The roof will be made to be incompatible. We're going to use shingles to be in compatible state with the neighboring properties. So these are some of the changes we have. And I'm not, I don't know if you are interested in seeing what the floor plan would look like at this point, but if you, if I look at that, I can show that. It's a two-story building with a basement. And we have looked at all the requirements. We have looked at all the requirements for RA6 zoning and tried as much as possible to incorporate that into the plans at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. This is also in District Four, so I will turn it to Commissioner Hughes to lead the discussion.
Thank you Chairman Vault. I'm noting here that there's no opposition here. A couple of questions for the applicant. The, the floor plan that's in front of us, I'm just curious, will the, since this is RSL supportive, correct?
Yes.
Will the entrances all be ADA compliant, I mean like 36 inches?
Yes, sir.
That sort of thing?
Yes, sir.
And then the, the overall height of the structure itself, do you know the overall height?
The overall height is going to be about, about 30 feet. And I understand the, the maximum requirement, I think it's 32 or 34 feet. But we're going to be below that.
And then the number of units, I think there was a reduction. Can you?
Yes, yes. We reduced it from 74 units to 66.
Alright. Are there any other questions Commissioners have?
Other questions? Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you for these elevations, Mr. Awuzu. Do you have any front elevations to see how it looks?
Oh, yes.
From Powder Springs?
Yes. I'm, I'm sorry. It must be on the printer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the front looks exactly, it's beautiful. I sent it to Commissioner Hughes. And actually, this is the side, let me show, show the side. I don't, I don't have the, the, the full front elevation right now. I don't have it here, but I have it. I was rushing to come here, so I may have left it on the printer.
Okay, no, I understand. I forgot my keys at home and came here late too, so I understand how that feels.
Thank you.
So the other question I had too was, just can you bring up the site plan one more time? The revised site plan?
Yes.
And can you just make, can you just maybe with the pointer just show me how you circulate around this site? The, the entrance, the exit, looks like on Powder Springs.
Alright. So coming from the south on Powder Springs.
Okay.
So you get in from here, we have a decelerating that goes into the property.
Okay.
You circle around. Now for vehicles like dumpster, you go all the way down. At the back here is a dumpster pad. Then maybe for the fire marshal, we come in and go this way. And there is this new requirement that has the, all the turns for the fire truck. Then I was talking to DOT, Fire Department. They said we need about 10 feet around the building in case, in case there's an emergency and they have to use lad and order. So we made provisions for that. Then in between the parking spaces, we have about, instead of the regular 24 feet, we have about 28 or 30 feet. So we have a lot of clearance for people to go in and turn. Then when you come in this way, this, this strips you have here is underground detention that we're going to use to address Cobblewater Department concerns. And of course, when you come in, we are going to have inaccess to the NRC from here. But right now, we don't have a plan yet for NRC, but we are looking at having a senior adult care, adult daycare center in there to make sure that the uses are compatible.
So can you put your pointer back where you had it? So are you entering and then you exit the same, is that the exit as well?
So you have exit here. So everyone, you come in, just about by the distance, there are two arrows, one going in and one coming out. So you come in, there are also an acceleration lane. So you are just, you are not just coming out and just jumping on Powder Springs Road. So you have an acceleration lane before you get in, get out.
And, and just on the left, and we'll have some questions to DOT on this, but the turnaround for, I guess for fire? I'm, I'm just confused by it. It looks like it's a budding, what are designated as parking spaces. Is that just simply, just markings?
Yeah, yeah. They're just markings and they're also packable. You can park on those spaces because the fire marshal comes and there is an access for them to go in there. Just what this drawing is showing is that the fire truck will be able to go in and back out conveniently. That's all, that is what it is.
Okay, that, sorry, most of my questions would be for staff then, at this point then. But thank you for walking me through it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have one more question. One of the recommendations in staff's original zoning analysis is no variances. And so I want to be sure that this new site plan doesn't require any variances.
Yes.
There's several, they listed four specifically. One was reduce the rear setback from required 40 feet to 35 feet. So you're saying that's no longer required?
Yes, sir. By, by, by reducing the number of units. With this new, new site plan, we addressed that concern. There is no single variance that is being requested at this point.
Well, thank you. Let me, let me ask staff real quick, if y'all have a chance to look at the new site plan?
Yes, and this new site plan gets rid of all four variances, so there are no variances.
Okay, thank you. And any other questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm gonna, go ahead.
May I see the layout again of the rooms?
You mean the floor plan?
The floor plan. Can, can you point, are there nurses stations or anything like that in this? Do the, if, this is an RSL assisted?
Yes, ma'am, RSL.
But is it assisted RSL?
Existing?
Yeah.
No, it's not existing.
Not as, okay.
No, this, this, this is a brand new construction. We're going from RA6, or did I miss the question?
Commissioner, are you asking, is it supportive or non-supportive?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, it is supported.
Okay. Well, if it's supportive, where are there nurses stations?
I think she's asking where the nurses stations staff?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. If you, this whole area, you have nursing station. In here, this is the floor plan, but in here, we have residence activities. We have nursing station, we have offices, a bunch of them, to cater for, for the needs. We actually have more than what, what is needed here. So over here, we have nursing station to cater for the need. And on every floor, we also have a provision for those nursing stations and support staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then one more, and I brought up one more question. Are you gonna be operating this business or?
Yes, it's, it's gonna be family-owned and operated.
Family-owned and operated? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. If I could have DOT come up?
You, you can have a seat, sir. You can have a seat, you can have a seat, thank you.
Good morning, Lea Florham, DOT.
Good morning. Have you had a chance to take a look at the revised site plan?
I have not, I have not received the site plan.
Okay. If you were looking at his presentation there and you saw the access points on, off of Par Road and also Powder Springs, any reaction to what you saw?
Sure. So the Pear Road, we were recommending for them to share the access with the adjacent property owner because there was not enough space between the two driveways to put two driveways there. As he mentioned, he was, he's just severing that access. So we will have no access on Pear Road, which is okay with us. And then on Powder Springs, we recommended a deceleration lane. We will have to see, I can't see from that point of view whether it meets our requirements, but it will be a minimum of 50 foot by 150, 250, I mean 200, 250 foot total deceleration lane. That can be resolved during plan review. But if, if they are willing to, to provide one, that will be okay. Our other comment, I think he mentioned he was providing an acceleration lane. We do not use those, so we will guide him through plan review on that. The other comment was the uninterrupted access. The access from the edge of pavement or the right of way to the first movement that a car makes inside the development. Given the depth of their property, that might not be achievable, but we will make sure that they maximize that distance so that cars that pull in from Powder Springs do not back onto the road, the main lane.
Okay. And from a trip generation standpoint, I know this doesn't meet, meet the threshold for a traffic study or anything like that, but I'm just curious. Generally speaking, is a RSL non-supportive project expected to have less trip generation than let's say a supportive or, or non-supportive facility?
I am not sure of that, so I will have to check on that, whether, what the difference is between the two. So to, to answer your question, but yes, with 66 dwelling units, it will not require a traffic study. Right now with the 75 that they were proposing originally, it generates 506 daily trips and a maximum of 38 in a single hour. So it's not a high intensity development.
Yeah, I guess in my mind, I'm just thinking if it's a supportive facility, fewer folks have vehicles.
True.
Possibly. That's just what I'm thinking. Okay, alright, any, any other questions for DOT?
Any other questions for DOT? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is for zoning staff. We could put the zoning map up on this case. Okay, there's, in the, I guess on the west side of Powder Springs at Horseshoe Bend Road, there's an RSL right there that's showing. And staff had shared with me, I guess this, that was rezoned in 2002, 150 units on just over nine acres. And that's 16 dwelling units per acre. Do we know if that's, that is, is that supportive? Do we know, John, or non-supportive?
I believe that one is a supportive complex.
Okay, okay. And then just overall, John, what is staff's position on this?
Staff's position on the original one was to approve it, but at a lesser density. And a lot of that was due to all the variances they're asking for, Commissioner Hughes. So with the new plan, staff is comfortable with recommending what they're requesting, which is the 66 units, because the density would be consistent with the RSL that is directly across the street.
Okay, okay. Alright. Any questions of staff? Nope. Alright. I have, I've had an opportunity to, to drive by, take a look at this site and then also look at the RSL that's across on the west side of Powder Springs Road. I think the site plan is certainly an improvement over what we were presented with last month. I'm prepared to offer a recommendation of approval with some additional stipulations. So recommending approval of Z-35 to the, I'm sorry. RSL zoning category, supportive residential units, maximum number of 66 units. In addition to, and this includes staff's recommendations and comments included in the zoning analysis, I do want to add a couple of additions to that. One is that the construction hours shall be from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, and no work on Sunday. Final site plan to be approved by the district commissioner. Final architectural elevations to be approved by the district commissioner. Maximum impervious surface, not to exceed 70% for NRC. And on the NRC, NRC portion, the following are prohibited uses. No billiards or pool halls. No drive-through restaurants, no vape shops. And that would be my motion. Oh, and then no, no light auto repair. Yes, we can put this on consent, yes. That would be my motion, excuse me.
My second.
Alright, I have a second from Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion? Let's call the question. A vote of five to zero to recommend approval of Z-35. Thank you.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z-47, American Dream Homes LLC, and Katharina Ikagi, request to re- requests a rezoning from R twenty to RA six for a townhome community in Land Lot three eighty-three of the sixth, of the eighteenth district. The property is located on the south side of South Corne Road, east of Timber Trail. Is the applicant present? The record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z forty-seven? Four, okay. Let the record show there's four people here in opposition. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, my name is John LaCovo. This is my engineer to answer most of your questions.
So you get ten minutes to present to us what you want to present, and then we'll ask questions when we get into the discussion, after we hear from opposition.
Your question again?
Yeah, you have ten minutes to present to us what you want us to know. Then we'll hear from the opposition, and then we'll get into the questioning part.
Okay. Understood. Do you have the latest site plan that we sent to you and your staff?
I, I don't have your latest site plan. I'm not sure if staff does, I can't speak for staff.
Who puts the date on? This would have been... August ninth.
I don't have that one.
Which one do you have?
The one dated July the fifth.
Can you pull that one up to at least have a baseline point for discussion?
That one shows twelve units in it.
How many units?
Twelve.
Yes, that's correct. So just, unfortunately, we were only impression that the site plan would be posted up some of the other sites for this presentation, but we are planning on putting in twelve units on this property with a singular road, a cul-de-sac that meets fire access codes, sidewalk driveway widths, and about thirty feet of spacing in between each set of six homes. We understand that the pography is a little steep, so we would be planning on using a walkout basement style to help us catch the grade, along with an underground tension in the back, and low points in the back to catch the water and ensure that no issues will occur with the adjacent properties. We are aware of the letter from the community about the concerns they had. We are intending on putting crosswalks, mail kiosks, guest parking, as well as accommodating room for right-of-way dedication, landscape monument signage. The only other... We do have elevations that are with this home that were provided as part of our zoning application submission. The only two items remaining on your list was about the stipulation for the HOA creation, which a client here has already confirmed with me that he's gonna be proceeding forward to get that stipulation letter. And we understand that the, that there are concerns about the adjacent properties also being R twenty. We are ready to accommodate the zoning buffers as needed. We're ready, any other concerns or questions regarding from the staff or the community? We're ready to address them.
If you're done, we'll hear from our position, then we'll call you back up for questions. Thank you. We'll hear from our position.
Good morning, my name is Robin Meyer, and I'm the co-chair of the zoning committee for the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. We would ask that you recommend denial of this application. Quite plainly, quite simply, right out of the box, it does not meet the future land use map for this area, which is low-density residential. Instead, this is a request for RA, for the RA six category, which the comp plan does not include as, as an appropriate zoning category in LDR. And the density of this, of this one parcel is planned out at four-point-six units per acre. Under LDR, that should max out at two and a half. The site plan that is posted on the website, the only site plan we've seen, removes the buffer to the, I think it's probably, probably easiest if we just show the site plan. The, the buffer along, in this case, the bottom of the parcel, seems to be gone entirely against another single-family home. There's no guest parking. We've not seen any elevations for the homes. There's been no, no landscape plan, no, no indication on the site plan where the entrance monument might be. No amenity area proposed. The, the accommodation of guest parking alone would cause this site plan to have to be modified dramatically. The... It's okay. The, we understand the mail kiosk might be, might be included on an additional, on an upcoming site plan. That's really honestly a minor issue, as is the case for virtually every other residential development proposal that we see. There is not a stipulations letter here, which helps us, which does not help us be comfortable that, that this applicant has thought ahead to how this community will actually operate. It's a very, it would be a very small community, so the HOA is going to bear an awful lot of, an awful lot of expense among twelve units, twelve small, apparently small units, we don't know much about the square footage. In that typically, in a townhome community, the exterior maintenance and landscaping is handled by the HOA, but we don't know what the plan is here. Serious questions have been raised in the staff analysis as to how stormwater will be managed, and so it would be good also to understand what the solutions are there. But the underlying situation here is that this is a very, very dense development, sort of placed in the middle, well, not sort of, but actually placed in the middle of an existing single-family neighborhood. And it simply does not conform to the future land use map, and it does not conform to the expectations of the neighbors who purchased single-family homes, believing that they lived in a single-family neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, like all the previous cases, this is District Four, so I'll turn it to... Was there somebody else speaking in opposition? Oh, there's one more, I'm sorry. Please, come on up. And if you'll just make sure you say your name for the record.
My name is Dr. Carol Thompson. I live within a thousand feet of this proposed development. And I agree that it's primarily a single housing, a single house, housing community. And my concern is the traffic pattern now is almost between four, six, seven o'clock in the evening. It's extremely difficult to get out of my subdivision, because of the traffic that's on the road now. And the schools at two-thirty is also very difficult, and the strain it would put on the existing schools that we have. So it doesn't really fit in, as she said, with what we have, and what we plan for our community. And that's it.
Thank you so much for your comment. All right, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hughes to lead the discussion. Thank you. If I could have the applicant and his representative come back up, please. Good morning. It, it seems the underlying issue here, you know, staff has recommended denial of the application. The community has highlighted some concerns as well, is that the overall density is inconsistent with what's in the area. Just looking at the aerial map that's here on the screen now, and I think the zoning map as well, it reflects a fairly traditional, single-family, one-home, one-one lot. You're proposing something that's four-point-six from a, from a density standpoint. Are you, would you consider something that's more consistent with the area from a development standpoint?
Yeah, less than one mile than Stargard Road and Mabelton Parkway. There's a new subdivision that's been built here, which is, I think is conforming with the neighborhood, which is like townhomes. And also, there are some townhomes that have been proposed to be built, which is less than one mile from, despite our property.
But one mile away is totally different situation than what is right here. So we're really not comparing, making an apples-to-apples comparison there.
Okay, but the reason we hear is because if, if it meets the requirement, we won't be asking for rezoning.
Well, that, that's, but it doesn't meet the requirements from a, from a future land use standpoint.
Yeah, I totally get it. But what I'm saying is that if we were to build single-family homes, we wouldn't have to ask for rezoning. We're asking for variance and for rezoning to be able to accommodate. We have four point, almost five acres. We try to make the marginal use of the law, the land. So what I think we can do is to reduce the number of units, to reduce the traffic of people.
So what we're proposing is to reduce the density by reducing the amount of units that we're proposing on the site, and adding some more data, and I'll be sure to send an updated plan that to all the parties involved, because I was, I'm pretty sure that if we had the updated plan, that some of this would already be shown a lot more clearly. But what we're requesting and asking for is essentially, if we provide an updated plan that shows a reduced density, and something a little bit more conforming with the R twenty area around us, would that be something that the staff and the community would be open to seeing?
I mean, I haven't seen the updated site plan that you provided. I think you also, in addition to the updated site plan, I think a conversation with the community would be helpful as well. So if you're telling me you want an opportunity to maybe take thirty days, put together revised site plan, but in addition to having the revised site plan, some conversation and communication with the community to see if you can address their concerns, I'd be willing to, to entertain that.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Then, then I will, your question. Oh.
Yeah, sorry. And if it would be possible just to have a stipulation letter prepared, where it just lays out the specifics about location, in addition to the site plan, just calling that out? Any kind of HOA covenants, particularly around rental? Will these be all for sale? Things along those lines, or probably things that would be helpful to kind of call out, that would not appear on the site plan? That'd be helpful for us to have as well.
The other thing to add to what Commissioner Anderson just said too, is this intended to be a public street or a private street?
Private.
Okay, and I would ask you to be thinking about long-term maintenance of that private street, and the ability of the residents in the HOA to financially be able to maintain that, because, you know, if it's private, then they'll be responsible for maintaining that in perpetuity. Okay?
Understood.
So with that, my recommendation is we hold this for thirty days, to give the applicant time to come up with a revised site plan that shows compliance with the future land use, and to meet with the community, to have a conversation around, to address their concerns with respect to your development request, and to come back with a stipulation letter that addresses the items that Commissioner Anderson and I asked you to include. And that'd be my motion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Vote five to zero to hold Z forty-seven for thirty days. Thank you.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z forty-nine. Blue River Development LLC, requests rezoning from R thirty to RM eight for a townhome community in Land Lot six seventy-one of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the south side of CH James Parkway, west of Sterlingburg Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z forty-nine? None? Okay, let the record show there's no one opposed.
Can you also do the future land use overlay, layer on there? Future land use. Yeah. Oh, sure. Yeah, thank you.
All right, Kevin, I think we're ready for you. Go for it.
Thank you, and good morning, planning commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore, here on behalf of Blue River Development, in this application for rezoning. This property is six-point-two acres. You can see it's highlighted there, it fronts on CH James Parkway. To the left on your screen is Paulding County. So this, this property, actually, on its western boundary, is the county line. What you're seeing on your screen right now is the Cobb County Future Land Use Plan that shows this property being within a community activity center. Across CH James Parkway is a mixed-use development. You'll, you can see the retail buildings that are along CH James Parkway there. And then to the rear of that is a residential community comprised of single-family detached homes, as well as a townhome portion of that development. In terms of the surrounding zonings, the community activity center is act that you see identified here is actually all zoned R thirty. So we're seeking rezoning from this existing R thirty category to the RM eight category for purposes of a townhome community. To the left in Paulding County, once you cross that county line, the adjacent property is actually already zoned, commercial in Paulding County. Part of the overall context for this property, and why we're seeking rezoning for RM eight townhome community, for sale homes, maximum of fifty homes, you'll see the site plan momentarily, is in an attempt to try to, again, bolster the commercial and retail activity in this activity center. The proposal that we have before you is actually consistent, per county staff's report, with the community activity center to have residential of, of a townhome community, as we have proposed here within the community activity center. And part of the reason why is it helps to support. If you're gonna try to bring in additional retail to this area, then it needs to have the support of residents there that can walk to it and have pedestrian access to it, and easy access to it, just like you have across the street. And the retail center across the street, while it has done okay, it's been around for a decade or more, and it still has empty, poorly spaces. It has some, it is, is doing well. It's just not doing as well as you would think, given its location on CH James Parkway. On this side of CH James Parkway, when it backs up to the Silver Comet Trail, and you'll see that, that's that green strip that you see to the rear along this property is actually the Silver Comet Trail. This property borders that, that portion. When you have property adjacent to Silver Comet Trail like this, what's, it's much more conducive for a residential community that connects to the Silver Comet Trail, and that provides just a heck of an amenity for those future residents, and one that's very much desired. In addition, you've got the commercial next door, St. Paulding County. They want to keep that as a commercial property for future development. So this tries to provide that, almost a mixed-use element. And we'll show you how we've also tried to accommodate that, and actually try to support those plans as well, when we turn to the site plan, which we can do now. Thanks. There we go. Thank you. Again, turning to the site plan, this is CH James Parkway. Again, this property here is in Paulding County, is zoned, commercial. Again, this property here is in Paulding County, is zoned commercial. And to kind of segue into what I was just speaking of as far as trying to support that, and what we have done with our proposed site plan and layout is we've provided for a future connection to the adjacent commercial tract here, and we've done that and provided for that so that in the future, when it's developed for commercial here, there's connectivity between this development and the other and have that interpartial connectivity, even though it's in a different jurisdiction, we're ensuring that we can provide that connectivity and therefore truly connect what this residential community would be with that adjoining commercial when it comes, when it comes to fruition. In addition, we have provided for a connection to the Silver Comet Trail, which is, again, adjacent to us along the south. We have provided for a full townhome community, which would be for-sale. We do have a stipulation letter dated August 26th, which details the mandatory homeowners' association, as well as providing for, though these are private streets, we have included stipulations which would ensure that these are private in perpetuity as part of the covenants and also ensure that the appropriate study is done so that the HOA can be funded from the outset with sufficient money to provide for maintenance of those roads. And primarily, the reason for this is you've got a street here that we're providing for that connectivity, which would need, would require it to be private, because it will have essentially a dead-end road at that point in time. Also, as it relates to CH James Parkway here, this is a ride-in, ride-out, which also lends itself to a better residential community than it does a commercial, retail or a commercial property. The adjoining piece in Paulding County, though, does have a full access point for future development. It's commercial, which is more appropriate. So you can kind of see how we're trying to fit what we believe to be the Lego pieces better together on this side of CH James to reflect the quality of the development that's been on the opposite side of CH James as well and pull this together. During this time, during the penance of the application, we did send out notice letters, and myself, I did not receive any calls or emails. I'm not aware of any calls or emails that have been sent to staff. We believe that the proposal, since it fronts on CH James Parkway, is one that is consistent with the expectations of the area to do a quality townhome development of for-sale homes that can further support the intended retail restaurant types of uses that would be along CH James on possibly the adjoining tracks and help support that as well as the existing commercial in the area. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. With respect for requests, that you support your professional staff's recommendation for approval and a recommendation to approval to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. I will turn this to Commissioner Hughes to lead the discussion.
District four today. Just your day.
There's no opposition in attendance this morning. Kevin, could you take a few minutes just to go through your stipulation letter?
Sure.
And some of the conditions or stipulations that you're applying as a proposed with respect to this?
Yes, and I'll just highlight it for you for that reason. We have stipulated to the site plan noting also that staff has recommended that final site plan would be approved by the district commissioner. We have stipulated to a minimum house size of 1,800 square feet of heated and cooled space. We have stipulated to the architectural style and of the units. We've also stipulated to two-car garages, and as well as that the garages cannot be used for storage space, they have to be used for parking of vehicles, and that's included as part of the covenants as well. We've certainly stipulated that there will be covenants, and I think very importantly, we've stipulated that these will be for-sale homes with a cap or a maximum of 10% of the homes being able to be leased, and that helps, again, to keep down the number of leased units, but allow those in certain situations that may need to lease for emergency situations or others, that opportunity, but it certainly limits that number so that these homes will be for-sale in perpetuity, and that, again, is included within the covenants. We've also, as I mentioned previously, included stipulations because these are proposed as private streets. We want to make sure that we cover Cobb DOT so that they're not asked in the future to come back in and try to take these over. We've ensured that those will be part of the covenants. We've ensured that those will be private in perpetuity, and I think more importantly, we've ensured that there will be a funding of the HOA by the developer according to a study that's approved by Cobb DOT that says this is the amount of money you need to have to start with, funded separately for the maintenance of the private streets in perpetuity, and that helps to ensure that that HOA has the money at the appropriate time for that. Thereafter, we've essentially included what are stipulations and conditions that try to simply mirror and incorporate what staff in these various departments have recommended as well. So that kind of highlights a good summary for you if that was your question.
Yeah, it does. I would, just another question, just looking at the site plan here, I don't see, unless I'm missing it, an amenities area? Is that something?
Amenity area is planned, and certainly we should, would not be opposed to and be agreeable to including that as an additional stipulation.
Okay. And then, looking at staff's analysis, I hear, I see here that there's a contemporaneous variance to increase the maximum impervious surface to 50, just over 53%. Just wanted to better understand, is there a justification for that? Is there some uniqueness about the property?
Well, and I appreciate the leading question on that. And we had discussed this, and it's one of the issues we've looked at and that we've had discussions with, and we would be agreeable to withdrawing that requested variance for the impervious surface here so that it would be a maximum of 45%, which is per Cobb County ordinance, as opposed to seeking the variance in that instance. And that'll, it'll play into a better plan overall, allow for a better space for the amenity as well in the community. So I think that that, it'll work better as a plan from that, for that reason.
Okay. Any questions?
Commissioner Lewis.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Well, I have a couple of questions. I see this all the time, and I know you and I have talked about this 15 times. This seems very crowded, and I know that the builder wants to make some money, but when you have six units together, it becomes a row house, and it, can this be reduced? I'd like, I'd like to see the numbers reduced on this. And also, my other question is, how, how wide are these garage doors, and what's the length of the driveway?
Sure. I'll try to answer those in reverse order. So the driveways are a minimum of 22 feet in length, which is the DOT and fire standard. These do have two-car garages. These are a minimum 24 or 26-wide townhomes, so your garage doors are going to be in the 20-foot range, so they're plenty wide enough to accommodate vehicles. As it, to address your first comment, the withdrawal of the variance request on the impervious surface area will result in a loss of units. That'll loosen this up. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what will occur here, and it'll achieve what you're, what you're looking for. That, that's why it looks that way, and it needs to be, in our opinion, after reflection, we, we agree and would like to withdraw that request. To go from 53% impervious to 40, a maximum of 45% will necessitate a reduction of the number of units.
Will there be sidewalks on here?
Yes, there'll be sidewalks on a minimum of one side of the street.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you for your question.
Commissioner Anderson.
Kevin, for, do you have a sense at this, at this stage of how much of a reduction in number of units the waving of the variance might be?
It's at least four.
At least four. So, so we go down from 50 to 46 at a minimum?
From?
Did I have the wrong number? I'm looking at?
That's probably about, right? We just, the, you know, when it comes to, to, to that design, the engineer just needs to play with it.
It's a lot of parts. Understood, understood.
But that's what it looks like.
Okay, great. And then, for the guest parking spaces that are, I think, on lots 47, 48, 49, and 50, those seem to, I understand it's going to reduce the, you know, the site, there's going to be Jenga pieces going on here, but just one thing to note is that, just the placement of the guest parking seems to impair a lot of the backyards pretty meaningfully in those spaces or create kind of some very, somewhat awkward shapes. I'm thinking of maybe 47. So just wanted to see if that could be something that could be maybe improved in terms of the new site plan, how the, the guest parking is allocated. And then, on the storm water management, is the intention here to have the dedicated pond within that kind of quad, that triangle at the top?
Correct. That's where, that's where the property tilts.
Right, okay. Is, but it, just that it will be there, but it'll be a dedicated pond, it's just not shown as an actual drawing of an actual?
That's right. They're just showing the area, and they've, they've made sure that there's, that's more than sufficient area. They just want to make sure that they, as opposed to just drawing a circle, since they haven't done a full hydrology and full engineering, they just chose to designate that that area would be for stormwater management, both for water quality and detention.
Okay, great. And, yeah, I was just trying to get a sense of how those, six, seven, eight, and nine, how they interact with that. I imagine that would be probably a landscaped area or vinyl clad buffering.
Right, and we have a condition requiring extensive landscaping and fencing around the stormwater management.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you. Those are all of my questions for now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Blau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin, can you comment on the degree to which there would be any landscaping on the boundaries of the property?
Yes, so the, what's planned for us is to provide for buffering along both bound, both eastern and western boundaries, and by buffering, you know, planted row of trees and bushes that would be evergreens. I think more importantly, it will be the landscape and entry features along 278, so the entirety of that length of frontage will be your entry monument as well as landscaping frontage, streetscape treatment along CH James Parkway, so that'll be fully landscaped and have that look that you would anticipate having for a nice residential community. To the rear, there's not a, there'll be some additional trees planted, but we also have connectivity and a road there, but it'll, future road, but there'll be connectivity to Silver Comet, so there'll also be rows of trees planted along there.
Do you have any kind of a drafted plan at all or summary?
No, as far as a landscape plan at this point, no. We do not have a proposed landscape architectural plan at this, at this early stage.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I'll turn it back to you, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. If I could have staff pull up the aerial map real quick for this case, and just, just looking at, obviously, the site that's in question now, and the, I guess that's the eastern property line to the R-30 lot, there's, there seems to be a significant amount of old, I'm assuming old tree cover there already there, and the house itself sits far into the property.
Correct.
On CH James Parkway. This isn't a question for you, it's more for staff.
Sure.
John, I know across the street is City of Powder Springs, and I'm just wondering if they have weighed in on this rezoning request, and if they have, what, what is their position?
Yes, they did send in a letter of opposition for this case, Commissioner Hughes, and they're concerned because it does not meet their future land use map, and they really want to keep the CH James Parkway frontage commercially zoned and used.
Okay. And just, just so I'm clear too, because it was brought to my attention, I was aware that, I've not actually seen the letter that was signed by staff, at least I was told it was signed by staff as opposed to mayor and council. Does that have any impact on the validity of the opposition?
It doesn't, it doesn't have any impact for us, Commissioner Hughes, you know, if they, they make some good arguments in there regarding their future use, you know, but we need to consider our future use also, which, you know, this is a community activity center that does allow for higher-density residential uses to serve as transitional uses.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And the applicant has, would like to respond?
I would, just to take that one step further, because I'm sure Mr. Peterson and his staff didn't have the, the follow-up discussion. Once that letter was provided from their staff, we did have follow-up discussions with the City of Powder Springs and their officials, and talked with them about, a lot about what I said in my earlier presentation, and while they didn't do anything formally, our standing from that is that they were then satisfied that our, our plan, you know, would actually fit with what they're looking for overall as well, and they, they really did not have any further objection after that follow-up discussion.
Are you able to share any of these details, or can you?
That was really it. I mean, after going up, going further with them, in addition, the point that you raised, it was sent from staff, from a staff level, and once some discussions were held, you know, above a staff level, then they were, that appeased them as far as their concern was. Because it wasn't sent from the council.
Okay.
If I could pose one more question, Kevin, do you know these units on Silvercrest that we see on the screen? Do you know the density there?
Oh, across the street?
Right.
The density of that overall development, it's a lot bigger. That's somewhere in the six units per acre, because there's also, you're not seeing it, but there's also a townhome portion of that, and it's, it's, it's overall, though, it's six, around six. I don't know for sure, but I know from prior experience, it's in that neighborhood.
Yeah, I have one more question. So tell, tell us again what the units per acre is here?
Right now, it's proposed at just under eight units per acre, and it'll be reduced from that due to the, we're not going to have the variance request for the impervious surface.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I've had, had a chance to, well, actually, I drive by this site every day, so I'm real familiar with the area and know it well. I also know it's got a fairly, well, I won't say lengthy, but rezoning history. I think it's been rezoned a fair amount. It's gone to R-30, to commercial, now back to, potentially back to rezoning. Is that?
That's correct. It, it was zoned probably 20 years ago from R-30 to NRC for retail development. Around 2012, it was rezoned back from NRC to R-30 to help the owner kind of reduce their taxes coming out of the recession, and now they're coming back asking it be rezoned from R-30 to RM8 for this townhome community.
Okay, all right. I think it's, it's my, my position that, you know, I know it was just brought up the issue of density, just under eight, but I think just under eight with access to CH James Parkway, I'm willing, I'm comfortable with, with less than, than eight. And in addition to that, a revised site plan that would show compliance with the impervious surface factor, I think would reduce the number of units a little further as well. I think based on that, I'm prepared on offer motion recommending approval, subject to staff's comments and recommendations, and that rezoning to RM8, and subject to the applicant's stipulation letter dated August 26th, and that would be my recommendation for this case. And that would be my recommendation for this case.
Motion on the table, I'll, I'll entertain a second.
Second for the purposes of discussion?
I have a second from Commissioner Anderson, let's have discussion.
And Commissioner Hughes, I just wanted to clarify, so the, you said less than eight, you're, you're fine with the current proposal at the current density of eight units per acre, or the, is there a specific number, less than eight, that you were trying to, or, I just wanted to make sure I was clear?
Yeah, good point, good point. Let's say seven point five, density of seven point, no more than seven point five.
Okay.
That's my max.
Seven point five is your max, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Seven point, okay.
And that the updated site plan, well, I'm sorry, will include a, a section for amenities as well. And just to clarify that, so, you're saying you want, they would need to come forward, even in this approval, with that, that next site plan would need to include the amenities section?
That is correct.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions?
Did you say seven point five units per acre? Is that max?
Yes, max.
And you want that included?
Yes.
Any other points for discussion? If not, we'll call the question. A vote of four to one to recommend approval of Z forty-nine with the appropriate stipulation set forth. Thank you.
Okay, moving into land use permits, first one we're going to hear today is LUP twenty-six of 2024, Lucas Rubio Lovetan, request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults than the code allows in landlot seven oh five of the nineteenth district. The property is located at the southwest intersection of Amelia Drive and Lyle Lane. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for LUP twenty-six, Lucas Rubio Lovetan? Is there anyone here opposed to this case? We got?
Two opposed.
Two opposed? Okay. Mr. Chairman Bort, the applicant is not present, and there are two people opposed?
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to Commissioner Hughes, but given that the opposition, they've shown up and been here this morning, I think we should hear from them.
I concur with that, and I would ask that we be, they be allowed to speak.
Okay. Okay, would the applicant, would the opposition please come forward, be sworn in, and present their testimony?
You may begin, and just make sure you state your name for the record.
Okay, my name's Mike Hughes. I'm not a relative of the Commissioner Hughes, I'm not seeking any preference, but I, I try to stay in my own lane, and, but we're, all the neighbors around are kind of opposed to this, because right now, they're using more vehicles and more people than is allowed now. So, we're, we're really not wanting to increase it and ruin our house values. I try, I try not to bother any of the neighbors, I try to, I'm, I have been friends with him, but maybe not after this, but anyhow, we're just not in, we're not, we want this denied is, is the main thing. And I understand he's already been cited for, for being in noncompliance by code enforcement, and they've enforced him a hundred dollar fine, well, big deal, we spend that a quick trip every day. So, you know, we're just not in, we're, we just don't want it in the neighborhood. He's got a lot of equipment there that he parks on the grass, and, you know, we just, I'm sure everybody here's had a white van in their driveway at some point that's had, from workers, you know, and he seems to think that this is kind of a racist thing, that we're, we're against him, and I'm far from that, because all of my workers are Spanish. I've had Spanish workers since ninety-seven, and I get along with them, great. I, you know, I just can't brag on them enough, but we're just not in, we just don't want this to go in our neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for taking your time to, to join us this morning, appreciate that. I, I think just in, is, in terms of giving the applicant an opportunity to at least state their case, I'd like to recommend we hold this, in hopes that they would show up for a hearing on October first. So, with that, that would be my recommendation, we hold it for thirty days, give the applicant a time to, to come, and that would be my recommendation.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Blon. Any discussion? Not, let's call the question. So, vote of about zero to hold LUP twenty-six to our next meeting. Thank you.
All right, last case on today's agenda is LUP twenty-eight, Eddie Alvarez, request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults than the code allows in landlots seven seventy-three and seven eighty-two of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the north side of Whippertown Drive, west of Castle Way. Is the applicant present? Okay, the director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP twenty-eight? Two. Let the director show there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board for or against the application, please come forward to be sworn in.
I'm Steve Carruth, I'm a close friend of the family, they're, one of the guys that lives in the house actually works for me, and one of the vehicles in that driveway is our company vehicle that we have there for him to be able to be dispatched from the house to go do work as needed. We actually paved additional concrete in the driveway, so all the vehicles are in the driveway, and there's a son living there now with his fiancee, that's temporary, until they can get their property set and move to the new property they're doing. That was the only thing that I would like to state on his behalf. Anything?
Thank you. If, if, if that, we'll hear from the opposition, and we'll probably call you back up for some questions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Munn, and I'm opposed to the increased parking on Whipperwell. I live behind the person who wants to have this variance. I'm just opposed to it. We've already have a problem in the neighborhood with cars being parked on lawns, we have businesses being run out of one house, we have another house where we believe that there's people living in their shed, and I'm just opposed to any more of this. It's zoned for a single family, it seems that they want to add eight adults to the house, or six adults to the house, and no, I, I really don't want it. Plus, they play their music real loud at twelve o'clock in the night, and I've called the police twice, and I don't want to make a big fuss about it, but I'm, I'm just opposed to it. There's enough of, you know, we're a single family. I, I think that this, this affects our, our home values, and so I'm just opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is also District Four, so, Commissioner Hughes, I'll let you lead the discussion.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, you were going to speak as well, please, come up. Forgive me for that, if you'll just state your name for the record.
My name is Bruce Brown. I live in the neighborhood, just off of Castle Way and Whipperwell. I pass this house every single day, coming in and out of the subdivision, and there are cars all over this particular residence. There, and as Mr. Munn said, loud, loud music, mariachi music, to the wee hours of the night, and it's a regular occurrence, it's not, you know, once a month or once a year. And the thought of additional people moving in the single family dwelling, as Mr. Munn said, brings the value of the houses down in the neighborhood, and as Mr. Munn said, we already have four houses in the neighborhood that have vehicle, extra vehicles, six and eight cars that park on the lawns and in their driveways, and it's really bringing the, the value of the neighborhood down, and we just want to keep our neighborhood together and nice and within code. So, for that reason, I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Anyone else that wants to speak? All right, I'll turn it back to you, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Chairman Bort. If I could have the applicant, his representative, come back, come back up?
Yes.
If you could just kind of address some of the concerns that were, just shared with us with respect to the loud music and, and the additional people at the home? Yes, sir.
There's a total of six people living in the house, it's a five-bedroom house, one of them is son and fiancee. I was unaware of loud music at night. Obviously, we're happy to make sure that doesn't happen. All the cars are in the driveway, and I'm more than happy to have our company vehicle be left at the office, and that'll be one less vehicle in that driveway. I'm happy to work with anybody and to help them any way we can. I think this county shows that is, does not show the basement finished, and their basement is now finished, so there's more living space there, but happy to accommodate anything we need to do to support the neighborhood and to, to please and do what y'all want us to do.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Any additional questions? No. Commissioner Anderson?
Tell us again, how, how many people live, not including their fiancee? How many people are in your, who's living in the house?
There's five people living in the house without her, the fiancee.
Five people? Are they all related to you?
Are they all, I'm sorry?
Are they all a, a direct relation, like a father, a mother, a son? There's no aunt or uncles?
There's nobody in the house that's not related other than his fiancee. His fiancee is the only one, obviously, will be related at some point when they get married.
And this finished basement, what are you planning to do with that?
The basement's finished, that's what I'm saying, there's a little bit more, that there's, that's why there's five bedrooms there now. Actually, one could be considered a sixth, but there's five bedrooms in the house now, and there's five cars in the driveway.
I, I have a concern that, and this may not apply to you, but we see it more and more, and I had one recently that we denied because of the relationships. You can have a grandfather, a father, a mother, their children, their grand, your grandchild, but no aunts and uncles, and we see that a lot, and then basement's being rented out to other people, whether they're related or not.
These are all related in the house now, presently.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to offend, offend you, but we, we see it a lot.
No, I understand completely, I, I do, I'm just trying to help him.
So, do you have any vehicles parked on the yard?
No, ma'am. We've forged additional driveway so that actually you can come in from Whipperwell or come in from the other street, and then there's, it's all paved.
Yeah, so, so, look, yeah, looking at the aerial map, I see the driveway from Castle Way and also from Whipperwell as well.
From, there's one from Whipperwell, and there's also one from Castle Way, coming in this side.
Yes, sir.
That we just forged maybe less than a year ago.
Do you have a two-car garage?
Yes.
Is it used as a garage?
Two cars are in the garage and three in the driveway.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just trying to, oh, sorry.
Sorry, applicant, can we have you come, come back? We have one, one other question for you. Yep?
I have my hearing aids in, but I'm not hearing right, so I apologize.
That's okay. I just wanted to confirm, at no point has the house been rented, or it's all been, there's never been any kind of lease with anybody in place throughout the house? Okay, great. And then the, the site next door, doesn't look like, I'm trying to see that lot, is there, is there a house in that lot that's right next door to it, or is that just part of the, the house that is to the left?
Are you talking about on that lot there?
Yes.
There is a house to the left, correct? Yes.
Okay, I, I just couldn't see.
Trying to remember.
The driveway or anything on, oh, okay, that's all one lot, that's all part of that lot?
I guess what he's trying to figure out on the, on what we're looking at at the aerial view, is there a house in that wooded land right next door?
Oh, no.
There's no house there?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And, and before you go, I'm sorry, before you go, one more question. Just looking towards the rear of the property there, is there outdoor storage, is there some sort of shed back there? I see, I think, what, maybe a trampoline?
Is there a shed in the back? I'm not real sure, Eddie, I haven't been in the backyard.
Yeah, there's, it was already there.
The shed was already there? Okay. Do you have any outdoor storage of equipment or other materials or anything like that on the property?
No.
No?
The, our, my company's a commercial roofing company, so it's one vehicle with everything in that vehicle.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant?
There is, the Commissioner Lindstrom is asking, there looks like there's some debris there. I don't know, obviously, this is an old aerial map, so we don't know, we don't know when the map, when this was taken.
Are you talking about the shed in the back?
No, there's some debris to sort of the right of it.
Oh, I can check into that when I go back, but I, I mean, if it's there, we can get it out, that's no problem.
Okay, all right, I don't have any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. So, John, can you, staffs, I know staff has recommended denial, but I just want to be sure I'm clear on, on the summary of the applicant's proposal, where it says the, the code allows more than five related adults and five vehicles on the property with a maximum of four vehicles parked outside. That's...
The applicant is asking for six vehicles and six adults in the house. The code would allow five vehicles total with four being outside and five adults. So, he's asking for one more vehicle and one more adult than the code allows.
Okay. Okay, and I think you just said, if I understood you correctly, park the van at the place of business?
Yeah, we could put the truck at that place of business.
So that would address one item?
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
Okay, got you. Okay. All right. And this is a relatively large house, I'm assuming the 2,100 square feet is with the finished basement, so they have five bedrooms, perhaps six, okay?
It sounds like they have six bedrooms.
Okay. I think to be... I think what I'd like to recommend is that we approve land use permit 28, but just for a 12-month period. And that the code enforcement staff do quarterly visits to ensure compliance with code provisions. But we add a couple of stipulations, one, that there be no outdoor storage, that the work vehicle will be removed from the property and be parked at the place of business, and that the applicant comply with the noise ordinance, in other words, no loud music. And that would be my recommendation.
A second?
I have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Let's call the question. So by vote of 5 to 0, we recommend approval of LUP 28, recommend approval for LUP 28 for a period of one year. 12 months, all right, thank you. I think that's all of our cases.
That completes the District 4 Planning Commission hearing.
Definitely was a District 4 meeting today. All right, I think I have a couple more items of business. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the August 6th Cobb County Planning Commission meeting.
So moved?
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Blon. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of 5 to 0 to approve the minutes on August 6th Planning Commission meeting. And then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the August 26th Special Call Agenda Review Work Session meeting.
So moved?
Second?
And a second by Commissioner Hughes. Let's call the question. Those minutes also approved by vote of 5 to 0. Seeing that there's no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.